Hello, everybody. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Neshova Regional School Committee tonight on 9/13/2023 at 6:30 p.m. Please rise and please join me.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. So next on our agenda is some comments. And I do not see any citizens who would like to comment. So we'll be moving right on to the consent agenda for leading us of August 7th, 2023, and the warrants of September 15th, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move, Madam Chair.
For a second? A second, thank you, Chair. Any discussion on these two? All those in favor? Madam Coach? Thank you, everyone. So the school committee chairperson update. I will cover everything that I need to talk about later in the agenda, so there's nothing to do there. Moving right along, guys. So I hope you're ready, Kirk. For the superintendent's update.
If you'd like, I can wait 29 more minutes until my assigned time.
Something tells me it's going to take you more than 10 to get through it.
We're actually going to be pretty tight. Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome back, everybody. This is our first school committee meeting of the year, other than our retreat that we had several weeks ago. So it's great to see everybody back again, and I know we're going to have a great year. But let's get into some of the themes that are in the report today. I won't go through all the items in detail, but I'll just give you some general thoughts around how things are going in the school system. So the opening of school, we thought was a very successful. All reports around the school district is that students came in happy and healthy, and faculty and staff are reporting a nice start to the school year. And so in that, we are experiencing, we have had a couple of adjustments. One of those is that Ms. Gobekciar, our Health and Wellness Director of Health, Wellness and Safety, has taken an advanced higher position in another school system as a Director of Safety for that school system. And it focuses on just that, the safety aspect. So we wish her well. In the meantime, we're developing our strategy internally on how to do that. I will tell this committee, it's frankly unlikely you're going to hear me come back with an appointment to that position. That's how sort of dry the well is in terms of looking for somebody. And we have a unicorn position in terms of Health, Wellness and Safety with the nurse leader positions combined with the safety positions. So we have a plan. Mr. Mulcain is going to be taking the initiative of leading us in our safety initiatives, and we're going to work with our nursing team to address all the responsibilities of the health and wellness aspects of that area. Okay. We are looking much stronger this year in terms of our staffing to the past couple of years, coming out of COVID, with a couple of positions. We're still able to address the needs of our students, and communications have been made to families where we know we need to hire a part-time special educator in Lancaster, as well as speech language in Stowe, speech language primarily in the preschool room. And so those processes, and hopefully those are going to be resolved here pretty quickly. Moving on, the new website has been launched, our Apogee website. So folks will become more familiar with that, and it becomes more intuitive with each visit that you'll take. And so we've filtered through a lot of the old material and continue to work on that. The website company essentially lifts your material, moves it over. And so now we're tasked with that piece of going through it now and getting it up to speed. You'll learn more about that in our goals meeting ultimately, when I talk about some of the transparency work. I'm going to team up with Mr. Mulcain on that side. But as we do that, we're going to grow, we're going to update the community regularly to come back to the website and see those elements as we grow, because it's a far superior tool to what we had before in terms of communications. So on the summer work, there's been a lot of conversation around a building project you may be familiar with, with Neshova Regional High School. And I know Attorney Gleason will be updating the committee later when he gives the school building committee update. But a lot of work went on with the team over the summer in preparation for this very important moment that's coming in front of us on Monday, the 18th, and then the 25th, 23rd and 25th. So as we come in, excuse me for a minute. Some of the work that we did, update on summer work, is we had an opportunity to launch some of the strategic work that we've worked so hard to set up for and participate in negotiations with. So we launched our professional learning community trainings with our coaches and our department heads and our principals and assistant principals in June. We followed that up with a training in August. And so we are now launched and into our teams at the schools, and we're running our, the regular cycles of weekly PLC data meetings has begun with our teams this week. And so it's all very exciting work. These early weeks are the foundational work. You know, it's building the case, the why behind the what and the how. So what's nice is that we've put a lot of time and planning into building that infrastructure. Now we put the training into it, and we continue to grow and build on that database approach to looking at teaching and learning. The state of the school presentations went well and fed into that PLC work as well. This year, we'll be implementing the mid-year update on those state of the schools addresses with our principals. And that will be happening after the second universal screening administration that will happen later this year. And then we are in the search for our Director of People Personal Services. I've been hosting a series of listening sessions, hosted three listening sessions with families this summer. Completed my fourth listening session with faculty and staff today, as a matter of fact, with the fourth Florence Sawyer educators. And so I'll be doing that through the month of September, the month of October. And then expect to see in the superintendent's report in November, a strategy and plan for what we're going to be doing in that interview process for the permanent director for that position. Okay, and so with that, I think I will turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Laura Friend, for a teaching and learning update.
Thank you. So celebration from teaching and learning and all the hard work of our Neshova educators. A year ago, we had no curriculum guides developed for families in any content areas. A year later, we are very proud to share an updated teaching and learning page, which is linked from our new district web platform through Apogee. And I think Ms. Masterson is going to pull up our new teaching and learning website. On our new teaching and learning website, we have linked here an updated instructional vision, an updated curriculum review cycle, with curriculum guides developed in all grade levels six through 12, content areas, K to 12 related arts, and grade five mathematics. And as the committee will know, that the outcome of our curriculum guides is reflective of the curriculum work that we began and engaged in last year. And a shout out to all of our educators for working very hard to come together and align their practices to create these guides for our families. So as we know, and we discussed last year, the work continues and the work is not done, and we have quite a bit of work still to do. But we're proud of the curriculum guides because they provide a foundation and information for our families that never really existed. So if you can scroll down a little bit, I'll lead up. You'll see that the curriculum guides are outlined by grade level and discipline at the high school level. And it is reflective of a good amount of work that was conducted last year, but we have work to do. So I'd like to point some areas, point out some areas that we're going to continue with this year. This year, as you know, we're engaging the curriculum review cycle for K to five literacy. We spoke about that at the end of the year last year, and that work has already begun. But K to five literacy maps and guides will be created as a result of that work. For K to five science and social studies, this year, we will be aligning and developing units and creating curriculum guides for science and social studies at the K to five level. We also know that we're going to be engaging in curriculum review cycle Phase One for nine to 12 science and K to 12 music. And so we will be looking specifically at the curriculum guides and the curriculum maps specifically in those areas. As well as the district continues with work to develop and align our curriculum, we will be engaging in work during our early releases at the six through 12 level, deeper learning and deeper assessment, using DESI's Coherent Skybook to work on curriculum development and mapping Stage Two and Stage Three of our curriculum maps, which is an assessment and instruction focusing on rigor and authentic assessments. So we're going to continue to work at this, and we'll continue to keep the committee updating on our work, and we're going to continue to come back around with our process and update these curriculum guides for our families. We hope that the curriculum guides provide our families with a glimpse of information about learning for their children, specifically at level in the specific content area. The second update is relative to our Summer Acceleration Academy. And I know that Mr. Mulcain will be presenting information to the committee for approval as it relates to two grants that we received this summer. One of these is relative to the Summer Acceleration Academy. So Teaching and Learning submitted to DESI a proposal to receive a Summer Acceleration Academy grant, which we were funded. And as a result, this past summer, we implemented a Summer Acceleration Academy for identified students in August. The Summer Acceleration Academy was a week-long program that really focused on providing standards-aligned lessons to accelerate learning for students based on individual student need. We had 60 students participate in the Summer Acceleration Academy. We had an academy for early literacy for students entering grades K to two, and then we had a math academy for students entering grades three through eight, grade 10. So we're pleased to share that we were able to hold that for our students, and we'll continue to look for these opportunities from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as they relate to grant opportunities for supplemental support and instruction for our students.
I am going to do my best imitation of Mr. Mulcain, our Finance and Operations Director of the CAFM, to outline. Two pieces to put in here are that included in the meeting materials is the FY22 audit report. That was completed in June. This is our first meeting since that time, so we're presenting that to you now. It is posted on our website as well. Also posted is the June 30th, 2023 OPEB liability evaluation report, which is important. Mr. Mulcain wanted me to remind this committee that he is working with a team led by Mr. Powell over here in terms of looking at what our OPEB liability strategy funding app for the future would be. The other piece from the Finance and Operations Department is a transportation update. We've had a successful opening of school with transportation, and then where we've had some issues around transportation, we've been using the protocol, the de-bus protocol, as well as with some of our other vans to address issues of where there is gaps in transportation. I can speak to you now with our specialized transportation. We're in agreement with the Aspet Valley Coalition, as you well know. And there is just a real shortage of drivers, and it's a real, real problem. We've been very fortunate, we're all in other districts that we've been able to get our routes consolidated and run to a much, a much higher degree than other school systems. And so where there isn't transportation, specialized transportation available, the district led by the CMA in that area has been addressing and filling those gaps individually with families as we move along. So there's a, we can contract out to other services when the vanpool can't provide, and so to get needs back. And so by and large, that's been going well. I will say, Mr. Mulcain reminded me this afternoon in terms of transportation, boy, did we have a day on Friday. We were here actually doing interviews for construction managers when the storm came through. And a branch or tree fell just right outside our window here, and there was, that was 30 minutes before dismissal. And Attorney Gleason can vouch for us, that tree was gone and out of the way within 15 minutes. It was remarkable how quickly the team jumped on it and removed that. But we had a situation in Stowe, for instance, where I believe it was on Taylor Road, as the bus is going down the road, and the road is blocked from a fallen tree. And in the midst, after they passed, a tree behind had fallen. And they were able to remove one to get that bus back to school, and so, and then all students were potentially safely picked up at their schools. That scenario, we are going to review in our administrative council tomorrow, so that we can walk back and watch the steps of like, okay, wherever the hits, where the misses, what do we need to do? Because, boy, that was, that was very much unexpected. And I think, considering all events, I was very happy to report, everybody got home safely. Everybody got home safely. We got communications out there. We're frankly going to examine our use of the communications tools right, through Apogee, because there are some instant text messaging features that we can take advantage of for moments like that, where we can do things like, okay, bus 24 has now left the school, and send that on. Bus 23, or, you know, bus 24 has left Florence Sawyer School. Bus 24 goes to Florence Sawyer School. But yeah, I think you get what I mean. So anyway, so we're off and running and doing those things at this time. Will take any questions the committee may have?
Everybody, can we just stick to the transportation piece first? Any questions on that?
All right, well, that's good. Thank you very much for being responsive in the meeting tomorrow to try to review.
Yeah.
The bus company is not the one in charge of making those more global decisions, it's kind of school to school?
In terms of which decisions?
So there was, there was a couple of buses that they decided weren't going to roll at all. There were a couple of buses, like the high school sheltered in place, whereas...
See, that's the funny thing about the nature of this event. This particular storm essentially formed over Bolton. Now, there was, there was weather in Lancaster, but it was rain, and the wind event wasn't so as strong. And so it happened exactly at the dismissal time. So the intensity in Bolton was quite intense, and so they just stopped because it was just bluntly clear and obvious. Whereas it was, it was a rain event at that time at dismissal in Stowe and Lancaster. And so then the cell that was here over Bolton moved towards Stowe in that direction. And by that time, buses were on the road. So it really was one of those events of a timing issue based on the conditions that are in front of you, and came up so fast that an instant decision was made at the high school, and the buses at the other two had already rolled. It happened at dismissal, I mean literally at that moment.
And it was bad?
It was bad. Bad, impulsive, beyond our control.
Good thing we escaped it, unlike some of our neighbors.
Yeah.
Little west of us. Great. What other questions do you guys have about supercabinet's report? Yes, go.
The Summer Acceleration Academy. Can you tell us a little bit more about what students were served by that? Like, was it to help struggling students catch up, or was it an enrichment program?
It was students who were identified using our universal screener, so Star Reading and Star Math, who were identified who needed an extra boost for the start of school.
Thank you.
Superintendent Downing, you said that it was unlikely that Ms. Gobekciar's role would be filled, and I'm wondering if you meant that it was unlikely that it would be filled this year because we've already gotten going, or if you feel like that's a long term?
This year. This year. And particularly in those roles, people are committed to their school systems, and that's not a role that you're going to be able to play, pull somebody out of in another school system, basically. So we're going to be good. We're going to be okay. I know that we can rally around the various elements of those job responsibilities. As a reminder, Ms. Barbara Gobekciar has done a brilliant job of identifying all the elements that are required and disseminating those things amongst the nine nurses in our system, so that people are sharing in that. So as we develop that strategy further, I will update this committee on how they're addressing it.
So is this what you refer to as bench strength?
We're building the bench there, Mr. Horech. Exactly. And you know what's awesome? We've got a good bench in our nursing department, so we're going to really be able to leverage that.
Thank you.
I'd like to take just one quick moment on that note and say thank you to Lisa. I think that she ushered us through the COVID era with grace and endless hard work, and we couldn't be more grateful to her. So I'm not sure if I would see her in person again, but this is my thank you to her, and I'm sure you guys all join me in thanking her.
And she's going to appreciate that very much. There's been a lot of hugs and tears around the district recently. But it's, we want to be excited for, because this is an advancement for her as she proceeds on in her career, so.
Okay. I'm just curious, with the new position opening up, will that be any change or modify the role, or will it just stay as is and hopefully hire a unicorn?
I wonder if that's a great question. We're analyzing all options. So as we look at this and we examine these responsibilities closer, there is a thing, an operational piece you all might not know, that's called the superintendent checklist. It's actually something pushed out by the commissioner to all the superintendents. And it's like, all the elements you need to be aware of and deadlines, right? And so this is an integral part of our cabinet meetings, and we disseminate the roles and responsibilities. So all of the responsibilities and deadlines that she adheres to are in that. And so we plan this out months in advance to disseminate whatever those responsibilities would be as well. So as we look more into that, if we feel like we need to decouple some responsibilities, we'll be bringing forth those plans as we propose, make proposals in the budget season.
Yes, regarding the curriculum guides, the website that has been set up is really a nice tool to have. I'm just wondering how those curriculum guides, are they intended for, you said they were intended for families as a resource? How are they going to be shared out with the families? I know there's a bunch of open houses coming up. Is this something that the teachers are going to, you know, show their, the parents during open house, or is, how is that tool something the parents will know to, that's out there?
Look towards. That's a great question. Multiple facets of communication, right? Like multiple messaging, multiple different ways to message information, to get the information where it needs to go. It continues to be important, and it continues to be something that, there's never one silver bullet, right? I know that I'm going to be including it in the comment this Friday. I wanted to bring it to the attention of this committee first. I think following up with our principals, as Superintendent Downing had said, we have a principals' council meeting tomorrow morning, and speaking with the principals to make sure it's also included in their messages from their principals' desks, and then also followed up by teachers, so that the message gets to where it needs to be. And it's, it's evolving and dynamic, and will continue to come back around and revise and edit as we know we need to, but it's a great start for us. I will also say too, that we've also created an internal teaching and learning site for teachers, which includes all of the work that we worked on last year, as well as a landing page for our curriculum maps and tools and resources to get to deeper learning and deeper assessment. So we launched that with our teachers on the first day back as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Yeah. Sorry, I have one more. The website is amazing, and I'm sure as like we're rolling things out, there will be opportunity for feedback, or if things are not flowing the way that they should, is there like a best way to funnel that information if families are bringing it to our attention, or if we're picking up on something ourselves?
That's a good question. So I'm looking at Laura, she was a part of the team that worked with the designers on that. I think there's, just in terms of the operation, this committee, we would work on normal communication channels and bring that forward, and in our weekly planning sessions, we get that, that information as well. And then as the communications subcommittee, and I don't have my cheat sheet in front of us, in front of me right now, our chair this year. Are you the chair of communications? Again, that's an appropriate device too. Because as the chair of that committee, she would bring that forward to us and any issues there. It's going to be a part of, you'll see this as an action steps and superintendent goals eventually. And we'll talk about that in a minute. We're going to count on people to do that. Because just as we launched and we have hyperlinks and things, I sent an email to Amy to say, hey, Amy, start clicking on all kinds of links. Like find where, find what we missed. We think we got, oh, our God, Duncan, so we found two or three, I think, in that process. We're going to continue to do that. Because inevitably, something, you know, when you're dealing with a thousand, million grains of sand, you're missing things, so.
All right, thanks for that superintendent's report. We're going to move on to new business. And the first is going to be the NRHS music trip to Orlando. Do you have a guest?
We do. I would like to introduce former office director Joe McCarthy. And Joe is going to present an awesome opportunity for our Neshoba Regional High School students. So, Joe, take your light.
Thank you. I brought with you something that I didn't put with the paperwork that I had given you last week. So, I'll get to that in a second. First of all, thank you very much for having me tonight, Superintendent Downing Sedg. My name is Joe McCarthy. I'm the band director of the high school. This is our second time taking this trip. And just a little bit of history, because I didn't present this the last time we went. So, when I was hired here 10 years ago, the day I was hired, I was approached by both the principal and our music boosters president saying that I need to make three decisions on a trip that we're taking to New York that spring. I was like, oh, okay. I don't even know how to open my email yet, but let's do it. And what I learned from that trip is that while it was pre-planned before I arrived here, it was very much in the realm of a sightseeing trip. Which, if I had a part of that planning, wouldn't have taken place in the way that it was. So every trip and everything that we've done since, I've really made it a focus on what educational value can we bring to our students. So that includes our yearly trips to the Boston Pops, musicals that we see in Boston, and things like that to bring sort of that educational experience. So this trip is a once every four years trip where we decided that we want to do something larger to help celebrate our students, but also be able to give them an experience that they wouldn't be able to get locally. So this trip is one that we started planning really two years ago in preparation for this upcoming spring. We have started working with a local travel agent who, his name is Doug Bennett. And he works with a number of schools around central Mass. He is a resident of Pittsburgh. And he is just a really great person to work with with school trips, specifically music. He has been in this business for at least 25 years from when I've known him, which is as a student at Oakmont. He was the person that took my band when I was a student down to Oakmont on this trip. So I'm really excited to be able to work with him for this. So it is a trip that's taking place during February vacation. We felt it was important as a music department to not take away any classroom time. So, we are going down during February vacation, which adds a couple of pickups. One, and the biggest one is being the air flight cost. If you've ever tried to go anywhere over February vacation, they jack up the prices a little bit. So initially, our trip was actually scheduled for Monday to Saturday, the 19th through the 24th. And working with Doug and working through all of his channels, we actually pushed the trip back one day to save our families about $250 on airfare. So that's why the trip was leaving Sunday and coming back on Friday. As I mentioned earlier, this, we want to be able to give our students an educational opportunity that they wouldn't receive here, per se. So the handouts that you just got, this is the biggest part of our trip in my eyes, which is a three-hour workshop. So, for both our concert band and our festival choir, which will be attending the trip. Each one gets their own individual three-hour workshop with a professional Disney musician. And that packet will kind of tell you the overview of each of those workshops. The first page is the instrumental and the second page is the vocal workshop. In addition to our workshops, both ensembles are also getting the opportunity to perform at Disney Springs on the stage, where all of our musicians and our families that are down there and just people that are down there will have a chance to get to listen to our ensembles perform at this Disney Springs stage, which is a beautiful venue. If you've never been, it's right on their little pond with a fountain in the background. We're underneath a great gazebo. So it's great for our students and it's great for our community to be able to showcase our kids' talents in other places. To be able to both perform and to take part in the workshops, there is an application process through Disney. So we had to submit two concerts within the last school year. And as well as a number of other, you know, what's your concert attire? What, how many students are you expecting, things like that? And we were chosen within a week to say, yep, we would love to have you down in Disney. The one thing and on the daily itineraries that is still up in the air is the time and dates of the performance and of the workshop. So that is still something that I've been working with Disney and with Mr. Bennett on just trying to really finish up those times so that we can get the actual information out. It will be sometime between Monday and Thursday, all of those events, where Sunday is being used as a travel day. And Friday is going to be used as a travel day. And the last sort of day at the parks before we head home. That is the trip in a nutshell.
Thank you so much for that. That's exciting for all of our kids and a great incentive for them to stay in the music program. So, once every four years, in order to give every student who goes through Neshoba the opportunity.
Yeah, that's the idea.
Any other questions?
So I noticed you said it was going to be fundraised, or there's going to be a booster. Can you talk a little bit about?
Sure.
How much kids would be able to take off the price?
Sure.
What you're kind of estimating?
Sure. So right now, we don't have the final price yet because we're still waiting on a couple of factors that Mr. Bennett's been working on. But we're estimating right now about each student paying $1,900. And we have been also working with our music boosters organization, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit for the high school. And they have been the ones that have been sort of taking all the money and dealing with all of that side of things. They have also started a fundraising committee to help mitigate some of these costs for all of our students that are able to attend. We're hoping to get the first fundraiser off the ground within the next two weeks, which is, we're going to start simple with a car wash in a couple of Saturdays. So you'll see our kids kind of out safely on the grass of the high school, inviting kids, inviting cars to come in and non. In the past, when we have run that, we've done donations. And it has always worked better than setting a price for us. So we're hoping to get that set up. We're going to work with our facilities to make sure that that's all set to go. But yes.
So are freshmen eligible to go on this trip if they've just started this year? Like, you're still enrolling students on the trip, or?
Yeah, so currently, so our hope is to bring 63 total students between the two. And we have, last I checked, 11 students that are in both ensembles. The original goal was 70 students based off of our enrollment within the daytime ensembles, because that's right now who is eligible to come. We have four ensembles that meet as courses after school. And as far as scheduling rehearsals and things like that, we have started just to open this up to all of our students within the daytime ensembles. And that's open 9th through 12th grade students.
Awesome. It does sound like a great, great opportunity. I'm so excited for those kids.
Any other questions? Are you looking for us to make a motion to approve this evening?
Yes, we are, because that will allow Mr. McCarthy and the Booster Club to officially build up fundraising and start working towards reaching those goals.
And so, guys, we've moved kind of in this direction of like this preliminary approval so that they can get everything rocking and rolling. And then I imagine that you will all come back to us within good time to give like a final approval? Or is this going to be sufficient?
Yeah, I think Mr. McCarthy has laid out all the requirements that we have in terms of what needs to be provided for the trip and in terms of including the schedule, as well as the cost and the methodology at which they'll be raising funds. So I think everything is in place for this trip. The methodology you referred to is some of those other sort of spur of the moment ones that we know come up around DECA and robotics. And we're going to do that as a general at a future meeting. But this one, we're set up and ready to go.
And we're okay with the TBD on the chaperones?
Can I ask a question about that? So, we have three Neshoba staff going, myself, our choir director, Mr. Eric Miller, and our accompanist, Mr. Bailey, who are all Neshoba employees. I have right now three to be determined chaperones because I was unsure, working with Ms. Gobekci in the spring, whether or not we can have parents fill those roles or if it had to be Neshoba staff. So that was a question that I had for you tonight.
Yeah, so with that, and this is one of the valuable pieces of eleven Nurse Gobekci with us, we have to look at that and, you know, the requirements around the students that are going. That's all operational procedure things that are typical for any trip that we do that are approved, whether it's Washington DC or outdoor education, whatever it may be.
And if there are fewer than six, you probably should come back to us.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, I am willing to take a motion.
I move to, let's see, approve the overnight field trip form submitted by Mr. McCarthy for the NRHS music program to travel to Disney.
One second. Any other discussion? All of us in favor? Oh, Sharon, go right ahead.
Can I vote on this? I have a child that's attending.
Yes. You get to vote twice, Sharon.
And then, Chair, we will come back and report to you on, give you a chaperone update in January school committee.
That'll be great. All right, all those in favor? Enthusiastically, yes. Yes. Thank you so much. It's a really big deal that you're doing this for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, guys, without objection, I'd like to flip-flop two of our new business items. Because I just am so excited to hear from Hansi. So, there's no objection. We're going to move to letter C in our new business and hear from our returning student representative to the school committee. Hansi, how are you and what can you tell us?
I'm doing well, thank you. Thank you for having me back. I really enjoyed doing this last year. And with that said, I wanted to discuss our second student representative position. As of now, we do not have an advisor for student council. We are currently still trying to figure that out at the high school. So once we do have that position filled, we will have another student representative within the next couple of weeks. So, we're all kind of tuned in for that right now, so.
Well, thank you for filling the void there.
Of course.
You appreciate it.
Of course. So, the next thing I had was, as Mr. Downing said, the start of the school year has been very smooth from a student perspective. Everyone's been really happy to be back in the building. And this is kind of another year where it feels more normal than all the other ones. At least I know from like my perspective, it feels like a much more normal school year. And I feel like part of that, not just being seniors, but like I feel that kind of vibe all around the building. And talking about being seniors, I feel like senior privilege has really been something that has been respected this year with students really respecting the whole signing in if you're coming in late from first, for first period and then leaving early to skip the last period if you have a study period. Then it's been really kind of, it's been pretty smooth from that standpoint. And then I feel that the move to the library for senior privileged studies has been really beneficial for a lot of kids because it's just been a more comfortable environment to kind of get your work done. It's not as noisy, it's not as crowded versus the cafeteria, which was not comfortable. You didn't have, like, it was just so noise polluted that you couldn't even focus again, you couldn't done. So, this switch in, back to what was normal into the library has been very beneficial to a lot of students. And along with the kind of positive, the positivity that has been radiating within the building is our therapy dog, Denny, who has been rubbing the halls. Every time he walks around with Officer Cool, it's just like, everyone has a huge smile on their face. I'm guilty of that too. I've lost count. And it's only been like a week of school. I have fed him too many biscuits, I think, at this point as well. But he's a wonderful addition to our community. And I think everyone definitely loves having him there. And then we have our activities fair that's coming up on September 20th. And the audition for the fall play, which is a clue, has happened this week. That's all I have for tonight.
Amazing. Thanks, Hansi. So glad to hear the high school is off to a great start. Yep, we're a senior here. You guys have any questions about student life?
I just have to say, when I did my first visit to the high school, the administrative team, Dr. Boynton, said, I have something amazing to show you. And we go in the main hallway to the cafeteria. It was so silent and quiet because students were in directed study or in the library for their studies. And it's, you can taste it. It's palpable, very positive. So, thank you, Hansi, for your effort. Your effort is great.
All right, so you are welcome to sail, though you're also welcome to go. Good luck with your advisor search.
Thank you.
All right, guys, so we're going to move on to the fun stuff, and that is school committee protocol. So, let's get to it. Do you think you can pull up the Google Doc for me? So the Google Doc has, this in the meeting materials has a track changes. Just want to make sure it's properly done. Nope. Can I plug in? Yeah. Are you guys able to see any of the changes? The changes are minimal. So what I did was I took your advice, just for the community to be aware, when the school committee met at our August workshop, this was one of the matters we took up, was just the annual revisiting of our protocols. And there was a longer discussion than we thought. And I think that that's good, it's fine. So what you can see here are some, the green text are the changes that you asked me to make. So I'm going to go through them one at a time, but at a swift rate. You can tell me to slow down if you want me to. So number one, you asked that we change this language, a little bit of this language around it being a business meeting held in public. These things are small. This one, you guys wanted me to add this green text, operational matters included, but not limited to. And then four, five, three, four, five was fine, six was fine. All the way down to seven, I took Joe's advice and put shall. And then, instead of respect, comply, which is a little more concrete. So eight and 10 were the hardest ones, so I'm just going to do nine really quick. So nine, we wanted to add in accordance with the open meeting law. That was just a typo, so that was all that nine wanted to do. All right. So, when I was able to step back and look at eight and 10, what we were wrestling with, I think, and it was getting all jumbled for us in the meeting, was the purpose of each protocol. So what I think, after looking through it, maybe you disagree, so let me know, is that eight is really about, what's this comment here? This should actually represent the notion of proactive communication. I think that that is the essence of number eight, that we want to have proactive communication as opposed to reactive communication. And we want to reach out with our concerns in advance of the meeting so that whatever conversation ensues at the meeting can be productive and that people can be made to be present, who could answer the question. That doesn't mean that the question is squelched. It just gives the administration more advanced notice to respond properly. So I took out the tail end of eight because it started getting into agenda creation. So I took out the tail end of eight because it started getting into agenda creation and that's actually 10. And so eight is really about being proactive. And so I'm going to zoom in a little bit so you guys can see this language a little bit better.
My only thought reading it for the first time is that, is the intent for this that if people really have any questions or concerns about an agenda item, they contact you?
Yep.
Or do you mean like?
Yep. Maybe that's just stylistic, but I'm cool with that at this time. If you're just confused, maybe I can provide the question, I can provide the answer. Like actually Dana contacted me earlier today and asked a question that I didn't have to give to Kirk, but if my response was not sufficient, she could have said, well, you know.
Yeah, no, it worked really well.
And that cleared it up for her and then she's good. So that she doesn't have to then come into the meeting and ask a question that is maybe awkward. I always felt like I would ask a question that made me look uninformed or made the committee look unprepared. And so I just think that that proactive communication strategy is, it helps us keep the meeting efficient. Is everybody okay with this?
Madam Chair, also recognizing that in the course of a meeting, the mature slowly percent, questions come to mind. You ask them. That's the deliberation.
Yeah, so this doesn't preclude you from asking questions in the meeting and I don't think the language does that.
This is, this is nothing substantive. It's just a formulaic, a stylistic thing with me always. So when you crack these documents, no matter what you say, I suggest that it's important that we continue to use consistent language. So I would call the chairperson, the school committee chair, and I would super capitalize the superintendent so that we know exactly what we're talking about.
Okay, so I'll do that. So then down to 10, and I think 11 and 12 and 13 had their changes. Because maybe we were just exhausted at that point, I'm not sure, but that's for next year. So 10, I think that 10 is really about agenda creation. And so this is kind of a ghost of the past, but I think it's still perhaps relevant. So just blow this back out. And so number 10, this is about building an agenda. So superintendent, the chairperson, you guys wanted me to add, and the chairperson, will create and share an annual planning calendar with school committee members in order to forecast future agendas. If a member wishes to add an item to a future agenda, they should make a request either at the end of a school committee meeting, at that agenda item, or to the chairperson at least 72 hours in advance of the meeting. If that item is not suitable for the agenda, our reason will be provided. And then I put this little note here because not everybody's as good as Joe. And I wanted everybody to know that Robert Tools does allow you to get past me. Okay. In my tyranny. Okay. All right, and then we're good. So.
We can go back to seven, just. Um, I'm sure we can, and we'll comply with the open meeting law. I think it's just missing a word. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to accept these protocols with the small adjustment that Joe has asked me. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, but I saw Mike have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
That's okay, I can wait for the discussion. I was going to say this at a retreat and I just felt like we were at a rabbit hole and I decided not to, but the phrasing of introductory paragraph always makes me feel like we're writing some sort of draft of a Harper read novel. Can we put like statement of purpose or something a little bit more formalized than that? I don't, I don't, it just, it just feels a little bit.
I mean, we could just go like this. Yeah, we don't need it.
Great, great.
All right, so you have asked to amend the motion or actually have added a difference. I'm fine with it, I made the motion. Are you okay with it? Seconded it?
Yeah.
Okay, so any further discussion? All those in favor? Nice. Joe, you good?
I'm sorry, did raise my hand.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to give this back to you, we'll lead up. All right, everybody, 6D, the DEIB statement discussion. This is going to be short. So we have a lot of work to do here and by we and me. So this is something that we tasked me with doing, reaching out to Dear J with Jackie's help. Other things have been occupying my time, including the high school project. So with this meeting behind us now, my main objective is to get busy on the work that we started at the workshop in, and our interest in creating a statement of support for DEIB, which is connected to our strategic plan. So more to come on that at our next meeting. What I'm hoping is that we'll have a draft through all to look at at the next meeting. Okay? All right. And now to 6E, parent communication policy. So over the many years as I've been paying attention, there's always been this ambiguity around parent-school communication or homeschool communication and what are the expectations around that? And in our travels over the last couple of months and working with the leadership team and also with our esteemed educators, it was decided that it perhaps is best to be made into a policy. So I know that typically the rule is, you know, a 48-hour response time, something of that sort. And so we thought it would be best if we put this to the policy subcommittee. And this might be the first matter you guys take up at the next meeting that you host or perhaps throw out your agenda. You might also look at model policies around this. I don't know if NASC has one specifically, but I know that other districts do. And I'm happy to take additional advice or commentary on that.
Yeah, thank you for that, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
I would also like the policy subcommittee to invite myself and this friend to those opportunities as we discussed and frame that because ultimately I think what we're setting out is a policy of guidelines of communication for the school system because I think that would just be critically important. And you know, as I find, communications as they are, by, by rule, I think you could do a great job, and our educators do a great job with communications. But where we fall back, we don't have, if you will, sort of the foundation, if you will, to revisit and say, hey, can we look at this? So I think this is going to be the best way to do that. And I think we can craft and build a policy that is supportive of our educators, our families, and just encourages good communication in that homeschool relationship. So look forward to doing that work and want to be an integral part of crafting that policy.
Can I just ask a question? So I'm new to this and I'm not sure what the protocols around it are, but are we as a subcommittee able to approach teachers and ask for their opinions on like what they currently do or what they think would not be too much to ask them?
Yeah, I would discourage you from doing that. However, what we can do that in the policy subcommittee is we can develop surveys and tools around that for which we can then reach out to our constituents to do that.
That was going to be my question, is this, do we have an idea of what our current practices are? Because what I want to make sure we don't start off on is proposing a policy that's not going to be well received or creating a big change. Like I think it would make sense to me to know where we're starting from and then look at some model policies and we can't know where we're starting from without like a survey data.
Yeah, this is a, this is one of those awesome partnership moments we have in front of us, so we want to do it in partnership. And I work directly with Mr. Devaney and our area leadership team. We have our monthly labor management meetings where we talk about things such as this. And so we'd be taking advantage of that, so we'll put that on the agenda for tomorrow, right Karen?
To it.
All right, any other commentary questions? So if you do, yeah, Sean, go.
Sort of related to that, does the contract have any language that's relevant to such a policy?
It's void of language.
So, and I mean, I think that everybody wants clarity. Everybody works well within structure and boundaries and clear expectations, so I think all parties want it to happen. And if you have any questions, you can certainly, or advice, you could funnel that to the policy subcommittee if you want to send anyone. Thanks, guys, on that. All right, super exciting, we have no unfinished business. And I would like to clock these, it seems, 46 minutes so that when I use your time, I'm going to later meet there. All right, so we're going to move on to subcommittee reports and recognizing that maybe subcommittees haven't met or if you did, you've met very little, just in the beginning of our season, if you will. So feel free to just say no report if there's nothing to report or give us what you got. So budget and warrant, I'm going to go to Mr. Horish. Assuming that these people are the chairs, I don't yet know, so.
You assumed correctly. Budget and warrant, thank you for the introduction.
I was trying to.
So we planned this for months.
That's your own music.
So yes, budget and warrant did meet back in August, although it was August 31st, where we elected officers, we established our subcommittee goals and key action steps. Those include, similar to last year, establishing a budget narrative that links the budget to our strategic plan, also to encourage attendance by member towns' finance and advisory committees, and to build on the FY '24 budget book for FY '25. Our next meeting is slated for September 26th, where we will begin discussions on the FY ' '25 budget.
All ready. Thank you, Mr. Horish. Moving on to communication.
Communication met on Monday and we have set a goal for the year to continue to work on the manual, school committee manual. So that we anticipate will be a long project to finish, first kind of revision of where the manual itself, bring it to this committee mid-year and then hopefully have a final version ready with linked resources by the end of the year.
Thanks Sharon. Next, over to the heavy hitter in the room, NRHS School Building Committee Chair, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Take some water. This is going to be a kind of a long report, so fortunately we have a short agenda this evening. So to bring the committee up to speed, and I apologize, most of you probably know most of what I'm going to say, I'm just doing it mostly for the, anybody who's watching and for the members of our public that are here this evening. Since I, yes, Madam.
I've been notified in the past from Nikki that the sound mics sometimes have difficulties speaking out, so in speaking to the public, if you can just.
Oh, you want me to speak? Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Lieutenant. Okay. So in regards to an update from August 2nd, the Nishoba Regional High School Building Committee met on August 17th, 2023. There isn't really much to discuss about or to report on that meeting. That meeting was more or less a status update on the project and anticipation of the MSBA's meeting with Board of Directors on the approval of this project and the status of the construction manager's search. As many of, not all of you know, August 30th was a very pivotal date in the history of this district. The MSBA Board of Directors met and approved the district's submission and design and project budget. So you understand, the maximum total facilities grant that is being provided by the MSBA School Building Authority is $63,147,901. Now, with owners and interconstruction contingencies, we're eligible for a maximum of $64,793,451. That's the number that we've been putting forth and those construction contingencies, whether they're owner or on the construction, they'll deal with cost overrun, substitute subcontractors, excessive price spikes and what have you. But our max up, we're going to max out at $64,793,451. Again, I apologize for repeating this, but I think it's worth mentioning, for any of you who have not heard me pontificate about this particular matter that occurred at the Board of Directors meeting, take notice of this. And I'm sure that I'm going to be getting hate email from Superintendent LaMarche in the Dudley Charlton School District, but prior to our matter coming to, to the vote of the Board of Directors, those who were in attendance, myself, Superintendent Downing, Dr. Boynton, and members of our consultants, KBA and Skanska, we got to watch the demise of the Dudley Charlton Regional School District's attempts to bring a new Shepherd Hill Regional High School to Dudley Charlton. The town of Dudley was unsuccessful, or excuse me, the school district was unsuccessful in convincing the voters of the town of Dudley to fund a new regional high school for their district. I bring it up because the reaction of the MSBA was surprising. There was no reaction, and that's the way they are. You either have the community support or you don't. If you don't, you are passed over as quickly as they can do it. There are literally hundreds of school districts in the Commonwealth that are seeking funding from the MSBA. As our OPM has reported, when we were successful in securing approval for funding for this project, we were one of 141 school districts that applied. Only 11 were granted entry into the program. So something to consider as we move forward towards our town meetings. In the interim, as Superintendent Downing alluded to earlier, we spent two days here last week for six and eight with interviews on our construction managers. We interviewed five respondents to the RFP, which are Consigli Construction, Shawna Construction, Gilbain Construction and Building, Fontaine de Meo Joint Venture, and Suffolk Construction. The end result of these interviews was a ranking in that particular order that I just stated. So Consigli Construction was deemed our most advantageous interviewee. And at currently, we are engaging or beginning to engage in contract negotiations with Consigli. If those are successful, they will become the construction manager for this district, but until the contract is signed, this issue is still uncertain or unresolved. As far, and I say unresolved, I mean we don't have a contract with them, they're not our construction manager at this time. Quickly, September 9th and September 11th, September 9th, we held our, our final walkthroughs in advance of town meeting. We had very good attendance at both walkthroughs, approximately 50 people or so took the two-hour walkthrough of the Magic Kingdom and got the full view of the current deficiencies in the building. September 11th, if any of you have not seen the, the public forum on September 11th, take a walk, take a look at, take a listen or take a view of it. It was approximately two hours long. Again, it's self-serving for me to say it, but I thought it was excellent. We did face some harsh questioning of this project, but overall, I think it was an excellent presentation, very informative, and if you haven't seen it, please watch it in advance of town meeting. We miss on my part to not thank Ms. Hannigan for all her assistance in regards to that particular forum. She did the homework on that. Okay. We do have some unfinished business this week and next. First item of unfinished business is still capital planning. They're going to be making a recommendation at town meeting, same as the Lancaster Finance Committee. Stowe Capital Planning met last week on the 7th, we're again meeting with them on the 14th. They've invited Ms. Viverito and Chairman Viverito and Superintendent Downing to come back. They didn't extend an invitation to me, but I will be there regardless. And I would say that the presentation before the planning committee in Stowe was a positive one. I think that from my perspective, and perhaps the chair and superintendent can have a different perspective, I felt that any concerns they had were solely relegated to the cost of this particular project. There was really nothing that they could point to in regards to the design that was objective, was concerned to them. So credit to our designer at KBA for putting together what is pretty, proving to be a fairly decent, a fairly excellent. at KBA for putting together what is pretty, proving to be a fairly decent, a fairly excellent schematic, or design for a new high school. Also, Lancaster FinCon is going to be meeting at 6:15 PM in the MRE cafeteria on September 18th, 45 minutes in advance of the town meeting. There are only two matters that they'll be discussing, and one of them is amending the Water Enterprise Fund. So one can assume that 43 of those 45 minutes, if they go the entire time, are going to be dedicated to this particular project. Their vote on the floor of the town meeting in Lancaster is exceedingly important. I would ask and request that Ms. Park, Ms. Simon, and Dr. Ryan, also be in attendance if you're available. I think a united front in front of the FinCon would be appropriate that evening. As far as the town meetings are concerned, you know, we all know that all three towns have scheduled the town meetings for September 18th. I have handed down a mandate that all voting members of the Michelob Regional High School Building Committee be present and accounted for at 7:00 PM on the 18th. All leave of voting members are canceled, and they're ordered to appear at their respective town meeting locations, MRE Auditorium, the upper gymnasium at the high school for Bolton residents, and the Center School for Stowe. As for the district committee members from Lancaster and Bolton, we will be accommodated and seated at the front of each town's meeting assembly, along with voting members of the Michelob Regional High School Building Committee from that particular town, and as well as any designated advisory members and consultants. So we do have a couple of our advisory members and consultants who will be in the three towns. Dr. Larfriend will be in Lancaster, Mr. Mulcaren will be in Bolton, and Marion Williams from Skanska USA will be in Stowe. Also Craig Olson from KBA will also be in Bolton. As far as Stowe is concerned, they've modified the seating and presentation requests, and I would ask the Stowe District Committee members to interface with Chair Viverito. She will be the team leader in Stowe. Ms. Cohen will be the team leader in Bolton. Let the Stowe reps just speak to Ms. Viverito. She will tell you where you need to be at that meeting. My expectation is that all members of the committee will also be present and accounted for, and by my use of the word expectation, please construe that as an insistence, as it is the obvious second 2023 vote of this committee that is before each sending community's town meeting assembly. Just to give you a little bit of preview on this, I'd like all the members to be mindful of at least a couple of procedural matters of town meeting. I'm not certain this has happened in Bolton or Stowe, but for better or worse, mostly for worse, it's happened twice in the town of Lancaster over the past three years. And so far as, our town meetings were commenced with a significant number of attendees stuck in the entry queue. First time it happened, there was no relief for those stuck in the queue. The second time, the start was delayed until most attendees were seated. I'm not sure everyone was in before the matter, before the meeting was started. So, you know, the funding articles in Lancaster, it's Article 1. In Bolton, it's Article 2 and 3, and it's Article 1 in Stowe. So the meetings are going to start with our warrant articles. So I'm suggesting to our membership that it's important that we be mindful of whether or not everybody who's planning on attend is in the meeting area at the commencement of the meeting. If not, I would ask that the membership, especially Chair Viverito and Chair Cohen, be mindful of this and perhaps seek relief from the moderator if there's any doubt that all members of the town meeting are not seated at the time that the gallows falls. Stowe has a little bit more wiggle room. They can move on to some less controversial, less interesting warrant articles, but Bolton and Stowe, Bolton and Lancaster, they only have three or four articles on their warrant. So it's going to be really important that, you know, that we be mindful of this. A couple of things, if, I would ask that if Chair Viverito or Vice Chair Cohen move anything, I would request that the membership of this committee second any motion. You don't have to support the motion necessarily, but you can at least second it for purposes of discussion. But I would ask that you do that. As far as procedural aspects are concerned, it's similar to if the moderator refuses to recognize the motion. You can appeal the motion, similarly that he would, and when he would appeal the chair's decision. So that is parliamentary procedure that the moderator must address and must recognize. Also, one other thing to consider is that if the vote is significantly in favor of the warrant articles, I would suggest that we move, and if one of our members moved for reconsideration. That's a tactic they do in Lancaster all the time. It just basically seals the deal with a motion for consideration if it's defeated. So if we have good numbers, I suggest, because I don't know if the, in Lancaster, it's always some member of the select board that moves, but if, if we have good numbers on these warrant articles, move for reconsideration.
Could you explain that to me? I'm sorry.
May I?
Please.
Okay. So what happens is, is that any matter that is voted on by the body can then be reconsidered at that particular meeting. Okay? So the rules of procedure require that if an individual who has voted in the prevailing side of the matter, they have leave to move for reconsideration. So if you're on the non-pervailing side, you're basically done. But if you're on the prevailing side, you might have a second thought about this. This is the purpose of the rule, and you might want to bring it up for reconsideration. So the requirement is that anybody who moves for reconsideration must have been voting on the prevailing side. What most town meeting assemblies use this for is to basically just put, put up an issue, perhaps, you know, one that garners a lot of public interest. And then if it, if it passes, you basically move for reconsideration. If that reconsideration motion fails, then eventually the matter is sealed. There's no further reconsideration.
You're giving people the opportunity to change their mind, by then?
It's a procedural tactic that we see in Lancaster, we use all the time. The purpose of the rule is for someone who voted in favor of it, who then kind of thinks about it, says, I'm not so sure. I think this is the thing we should do. Let's reconsider this. That's the purpose of the rule. But the ultimate result of this rule is if you move to reconsider and it fails, is that the matter can no longer be reconsidered after that. It's a parliamentary tactic, it's a strategy, and it's used all the time in Lancaster. It basically seals the deal. If that reconsideration motion fails, then that, you cannot, again, there's not a lot on the warrant in Lancaster or Bolton, but once that reconsideration motion fails, the meeting, the matter cannot be raised again during that meeting.
And it's especially tricky, because if everybody leaves after you take the vote, and all the people who are interested in that warrant article leave, the motion to reconsider can happen when the, when the opponents remain.
Right. Good point.
So that's why they do it right away, to prevent a later motion from, which is relatively underhanded, to occur after we've all left.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah. So we want to, again, we only want to do this if the vote is clearly in our favor. If it's close, it could be tempting fate. So use your discretion. I trust all of you. I actually have more on this, so I apologize for the length of this meeting. This is a report. Okay. So going back to construction management. So right now, we have our next meeting scheduled for September 27th. At that time, there was an expectation on my part that we'll be bringing forth from the building committee a recommendation to enter into contract with a construction management firm, whoever that might be, and to enter into two amendment agreements with our OPM and our designer to move this process forward. Now, in discussing this matter with Superintendent Downing, he was very sensitive to the fact that, you know, this committee has a practice that we do not generally vote on matters at first blush. However, I'm going to again expect, and this is true, that is insist, that if we are successful on the 18th, and again, successful on the 23rd and 25th, that this committee move to, move to approve contractual, entry into contract for that construction management firm, and to amend our OPM and designer contracts accordingly. The reason for this is, is that, as with anything, time is money. And our OPM is absolutely insistent, they're apoplectic, that this building process commence October 1st, which is the first date that we will be eligible to seek funding for this and to commence this project in earnest. One of the issues that came up during the interviews, and it was an interesting one, is that for those of you who may not be totally privy to what's going on with this project, we're going to be bringing a geothermal cooling heating system to the high school. The first order of business for the construction firm will be the drilling of those geothermal wells. This is becoming a very popular form of heating and cooling in the Northeast. And right now, drillers are at a premium. So it's imperative that our construction management firm have as much lead time as they possibly can to secure, to lock in and secure the appropriate subcontract, not the least of which is our G, is a geothermal driller, to commence, or to commence that geothermal drilling, which is scheduled to start late February, early March. So as of late February, early March, it all goes according to Hoyle. We should see the presence of our construction firm on the Michelob Regional High School campus and construction starting in earnest. So it's imperative that we get approvals for those contracts on the 27th. Now, that being said, and for anybody who's listening to this, I don't want anything to be misconstrued here. There is no expectation on my part, as I sit here tonight on 13th of September, that this is a done deal on the 18th, and this is a done deal on the 23rd and 25th. It's anything but. However, due diligence warrants that we proceed as if we're going to be successful on the 18th and the 23rd and the 25th, because our OPM and our designers want to start this project no later than August, excuse me, October 1st. So that matters, that is my report. Sorry, I was lunging, but...
It was very thorough and very useful. Thank you. I saw Scott's hand first. Scott, Scott.
Yeah, right. So Joe's asking us to approve contracts two days after we get approval from the townships. When will we have an opportunity to review them?
I, I, I'm sorry. I forgot to mention this. So we should have, we should, the intention right now is to present the building committee that's meeting on the 21st of September with the contracts and the amendments. And we'll be, I'll be seeking at that time approval from the building committee for recommendation for execution of the construction manager contract and the two amendments for our consultants. Once I have the contracts, I will distribute those to the membership for your review. That should give you six days to review them. I know it's not a lot of time, and I know that reading these contracts is as, you know, compelling as reading a Nicholas Sparks, well... It's, 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 again, my expectation and it's read that is insistence that this project has looked at October 1st as the target date to start this construction in earnest. And I think that, I don't think, I know, we need to do this, we need to get those contracts signed, and we need to get this thing started, because as I said, we were talking, one of the interviewees had talked about the issue with securing drilling subcontractors. And he had even mentioned during the interview that some firms are looking as far west as Ohio and Indiana for, for drillers. They're just not on every street corner. So it's imperative that we have those subcontractors lined up for the start in February and March. So I'm going to insist that this be part four on the 27th, and that you have enough, that you can be given an opportunity to read these, but I'm going to be looking for approval for those contract executions on that day.
So it sounds like procedurally, we're going to have drafts of those contracts by the 19th in order to meet with the requirements to get the materials posted two days before the meeting on the 21st, and so...
The building committee materials sometimes come, they'll be maybe within our hands by the 20th?
Yeah. So, but then, so we basically have to speed read them if we want, if we're so inclined. Yes.
And then probably bring questions to the building committee meeting on the 21st, so that there's time to review them and resolve anything that might be irrelevant.
The building committee, you guys don't need to attend the building committee meeting unless you want to as a spectator, and you can engage in public comment. But the building committee members, which actually is the three of us, will be the ones looking or be participating in the conversation around the contract that is already starting to be negotiated with Consigli. And then you guys will actually have a week to read, or a little less, to read the contract that the school building committee either does or does not recommend to you. Yeah, tight timeline, but time is indeed money. So we want to be very cognizant of that in keeping the cost hopefully below the GMP.
Just a point of clarification for Attorney Gleason. I believe ultimately what you, the motion of being part of you is authorizing the superintendent to approve the contracts. Essentially, you're saying, we approve the contracts, but you're authorizing them to sign off on them.
Yeah, and those, and those negotiations are ongoing as we speak. As we speak. And they will be, the final draft will be reviewed by our legal counsel, the district. So I have the utmost comp, and again, I, and forgive the familiarity of this expression, but for KBA, Fiscanska, and for Consigli, it's not their first trip to the rodeo. And a lot of this is going to be kind of repetitive terms and provisions in the contract. That's not to say that the committee shouldn't have complete oversight over this, but this is going to be one of those rare instances where we're going to ask you to sort of, let's expedite the execution of these documents and start this on October 1st.
Okay, go ahead, Amy.
Is it the construction manager subcommittee, search subcommittee that's been
Yes.
Doing that work?
Yes.
If somebody wanted to look at the meeting minutes or look at the work that they've been doing?
Ms. Masterson has...
The rankings.
You have the, you have the minutes of the meetings, do you not?
Ms. Wind does.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm just saying that that might be something that for interested parties to try to get up to speed in advance, they could look there for that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Did not, did she not send you the minutes from the past meetings? I thought I told you.
From the school building or the interviews?
No, no, from the archival information that I, we talked about the other day, the minutes and the agendas from the previous meetings. Did she not send those to you?
I think she sent the agendas and asked them to post them.
Oh, okay. All right. I'll have her send the minutes along as well. We have the minutes, we have the agendas, so we'll get those posted.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and on the website, there's the school, the school building subcommittee. But then within that subcommittee, there are three additional subcommittees. One of them is the Contractor Search Subcommittee. There's a working group. There's Communications Subcommittee. Yes.
So I just want to comment as far as the whole school building process is concerned. I want to thank Attorney Gleason for leading this process with varying levels of intensity over the last five years now, I think this process has been going through.
Three for Joe. Three for Joe, but ten for the district.
Right. And so I think it's been a very thorough process. A lot of issues have been vetted over the course of the process. And, you know, I, because I've been talking to people recently who have raised issues that I responded basically saying, if you've seen the public forums, if you've seen the school building committee, those issues have been addressed throughout the process. So, you know, this is not the time to start bringing up new objections. If you have questions or concerns, I actually would kind of wonder what would be the right way to kind of get those people steered in the right direction to get those kinds of questions answered. But, you know, when this, when I first came on committee, I was a skeptic of the new high school. And by observing the process and the meetings, and actually, in particular, the town hall, Manayu did a very good job of summarizing where we are and why this is such an important project. So I would just encourage people, if there is any skepticism, to get your questions answered. Hopefully, I think this is what the district needs at this point in time, so I think that we need to approve this project.
Thanks, Scott.
Just to follow up, there's a button on the school building committee and the building project website that you can click and submit a question, and you will get a response that accounts monitored.
By Amy, expertly, thoroughly.
The link to the forum is up on the building project website in more than one place, as are all the interviews that have been done by the Bolton Access TV with Superintendent and members of the building committee and members of the facilities for the district. There's, there's a lot of information on the homepage. There's a lot of information on the homepage of the building project website now, just kind of to get people up to speed who might be trying to catch up at the 11th hour. So, but that submitted question button has been used a lot lately, and we're able to get back to people pretty quickly, so. Thanks for doing that, Amy.
Can I just say one last thing? So this is the last time we're all going to meet for the 18th, and no one here can predict what will transpire on the 18th. I'm cautiously optimistic in Lancaster, but I don't know. But two things. One is that even if we don't succeed on the 18th, one of our three towns, or two or three, whatever, votes this down, it's not the end of the line, but we'll begin to see the end of the line. To be very clear at that point, we're going to really have to work hard between the 18th and the 28th. They had 27th on the slide at the last building committee meeting, but it's the 28th. 120 days from August 30th is 28th of December, which is Saturday, maybe that's the issue. But no matter what happens on the 18th, there are certain, there are five individuals that, six individuals actually, I want to thank personally. I want to first and foremost thank former Superintendent Brooke Clenchey for all the work she did in bringing this project to the district. I also want to thank former business manager, Tricia Maroni, for all the hard work she did on this project. You know, two individuals who do not live in this district, who were instrumental in bringing this project to us. Two other individuals who were not, were not resident in this district are Mr. Mo Karen and Superintendent Downing. And I don't know how, Kirk, you look so fresh as a daisy over there. I am spent beyond belief, you know? Honestly, Kirk has done yeoman's effort. He's going to be in Bolton at the backyard events, weather permitting, yes, weather permitting, but the FINCOMs, the Select Board, it's the Council on Aging, everybody that Superintendent Downing has reached out to. I mean, he does not even live in this district, and he has basically brought this thing to the precipice of success. The last two individuals I want to personally thank are my co-vice chairs, I say my, but they're not my, they're my co-vice chairs, Ms. Viverito and Ms. Cohen, for everything that they have done to bring this project to fruition. Amy needs to get specially recognized for all the work she does as the chair of the CEO subcommittee. She maintains the website, she responds to a lot of the questions that are posed. Amy has done a fabulous job. I just will, between you and me personally, won't say what it is, but please look at the text that I sent you regarding the quote from the movie and embrace that, please.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Yeah. So good luck to us on the 18th. I do hope we prevail. I think it's what's best for our kids and for our staff and for our community. So, Joe, great job.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
So on to our next subcommittee. It is the Personnel Subcommittee. Mr. Horish is the former chair, but I'm just going to steal your thunder and say, we have not met yet.
We're looking for music?
No, I thought we were doing a Lionel Richie intro. That's okay. Hold on, hold on. It's fine.
That's good. That's good. So Personnel has not met yet. Our chief objective, Sharon, Mike, and I, we will be trying to set up a meeting before the 27th, so be on the lookout for my emails tonight.
Can I ask a question about that? Does that mean that the school committee members still have time to, are we still having a discussion as a committee about goals? Or is that something, which comes first? Are you guys meeting or...
So Personnel is going to meet with Kirk prior to the 27th, because Kirk will attend that Personnel Subcommittee meeting. And then we will illuminate all of the indicators that you guys want to prioritize, and we'll identify the eight.
Have we done that? Are we supposed to have done that?
You still have time to identify the indicators you would like prioritized. And there was a survey that was sent out at some point.
Your homework was in the workshop.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
And I sent some crazy email. I sent some crazy email that was like, so look for that. And then, you're welcome. And then we will bring to you on the 27th a draft of Kirk's goals along with those indicators. And on the, I guess, so from the 27th to the 11th, October something, that's when we will finalize his goals. All right, on to the next subcommittee. Policy.
So we met last week, and our goals for this year are pretty much the same as last year. So we won't be working on the manual this year, we'll just be working on new policies. And then Jackie brought up the fact that Dear J is wanting to meet with each of the subcommittees, so we look forward to doing that at some point in the near future.
Question?
Yes.
Ms. Fessels, if you could just invite me to that next meeting, we can talk about this, but then we also have some unfinished business with policy in terms of some handbook items that we need to get into policy to match up with Master Malo.
Our next meeting is October 18th at 7:30 PM.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So we'll make sure we get the stuff for the handbooks to you.
Thanks, Policy. Over to our advisory subcommittees. Let's start with audit advisory.
So the packet for this meeting was the first time that I was able to actually see the audit report. I've been working with Marino this summer to try to receive a copy, but in my quick review, I was able to see that it was a clean opinion, which is good, but we do think we're going to have questions when we get into the details. So next week is our first meeting, and there'll be more to say after that.
And guys, keep in mind that at the next meeting when Ross is here with us, we'll talk a little bit more about the new regional agreement language that kind of bolsters the audit advisory's role in soliciting proposals for auditors, both for the annual audit and for the forensic audit. More on that. Dear J.
Yeah, I had the opportunity to meet with leadership in August to review their upcoming goals and more aspirations for the school year. They, you know, are reiterating that they're serving in an advisory capacity to the school committee, and as Amy mentioned, are really looking to support subcommittee work. To that end, if there are upcoming meetings that you would like some representation from Dear J to participate in, that could be related to Dear J directly and through me. They're committed to supporting our school committee in identifying a decision-making tool that will inform the work that the school committee and subcommittees do over the course of the next year. They are in, working on that and a guiding document that will serve as a tool for the committee and the district to utilize. The other thing that I just wanted to reiterate from Dear J, they're really hoping that the decision-making tool and guiding documentation will help identify and subsequently include resources and information on the Dear J website that are relevant to our community. And they would like to give a specific shout-out to the district and the new website, which they find is much more accessible for the school, the community, and for the work of Dear J. I did have a specific ask for them. You know, Dear J does a lot of work behind the scenes, and part of the reporting out that we will be sharing moving forward is the number of hours that that advisory board spends on specific work. So just to get an idea of the scope of the work that they're doing.
Please.
So Dr. Meyer, just so you know, Ms. Friend and I meet with the Dear J leadership quarterly. We meet in, we light Ms. Park as well in the past, and when she could join those meetings. We know that those meetings are probably happening when you're, when you're busy as well. We're keeping that communications loop as well, and I know we're reaching out for our initial quarterly meeting right now to do exactly just that work.
Okay. Thanks, Jackie, for that. Next subcommittee is the RACAC, or Regional Agreement Amendment Advisory Committee, which has completed its task. I have here, guys, the regional agreement that was passed at all three town meetings, and the very last part is the what signature on the very last page?
Commission.
From the commissioners! So, yay! So that's a really big relief. This regional agreement, I think, is just really clean, and it's the hard work of a lot of people who went into it.
Dr. McCarthy.
Yes, absolutely. The brainchild of Dr. Mary McCarthy, who's a former representative from Bolton and dear friend to many, or maybe all of us. So that's done, and therefore, I would like to move to disband the RACAC.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Very good. That felt triumphant.
Thank you for all the work and the time you put into seeing that through.
Yeah, it was a lot.
That was a lot.
I missed CPAC. I got so excited about my regional agreement. Uh-huh. Karen, let's wrap back to CPAC. What's going on there?
CPAC has our first meeting tomorrow, so I unfortunately will not be able to return, but I will connect with the CPAC chairs.
I think I'm commenting on all the reports that...
Please do, because you have an important insight yet.
I know that our interim People Personal Services Director, Yuna Yau, has been meeting with our CPAC leadership to build the program for the year and to work on Mercedes survey instruments, and so that's been going swimmingly thus far.
Excellent. All right. And then finally, over to Scott for OPEB.
Right. So the OPEB has been beavering away over the summer. We've actually met three times, and I have a very studious crew helping me out, trying to figure out what the district should do about our OPEB liability. We actually added a meeting later this month because we're trying to get to a kind of preliminary recommendation sometime in November, so we have to get feedback and come up with a final recommendation in December, because our task is to come up with a recommendation that can be incorporated into next year's budget. So that, as well as some documentation to help people understand CPAC better, is what we're trying to achieve. So like I said, I've got about five people helping me, and they're all bringing their, again, a lot of ideas and a lot of helpful tools to help us come up with the recommendation. Trying to be very sensitive to, you know, how much more money we put towards OPEB while also potentially facing, you know, the additional tax demands of the school building, but at the same time recognizing that it is a liability that we should be addressing. So trying to come up with the right recommendation.
Excellent. Thanks, Scott. I would just ask that the education prep starts here, so we could use some of that as well, the community plus us. All right, guys, on to the next item here, and that is the planning calendar thing. Planning calendar, items for next agenda. So according to our protocols, this is your opportunity to perhaps weigh in on what we should have here. So on the 27th, you can see that it is definitely filling up. The one thing that I think is perhaps most use, or most important for us is to perhaps have our goals ready, our subcommittee goals meeting, so...
When you say goals ready, if we've, I don't need to cast a light on our subcommittee, but we've submitted the goals, is that sort of finalized?
That's all you need to do.
Okay. Just submit the form.
There's a survey, right? There was a Google form that you guys can just submit, and then that's up. All right. As always, guys, if there's something you want to add, just reach out if something comes to you later. Those last few bullets are kind of placeholders for what likely to come. All right. If there's nothing else anybody needs to address, I'm going to move to adjournment.
Second one.
All those in the room.
Thank you.
And you have a good show.